That's when you get in trouble. I will, because I mean, we countywide, that we make history. But we talking about the ballpark. We don't have, as it stands, we don't have. We don't have it. We need to. Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, just glass of it. So Coach Chuck may want to prove it at the corner and give him another. Let's see, Chuck still wants to lecture.
Oh, yeah.
No, no.
Yeah, his article.
I'm going to sit there. I might have heard that. I made some charge, I'm not.
He may have the freedom to.
But his freedom may be toxic.
Yeah, that's right.
We don't have to respond to this schedule. And we are entitled.
They can adjust that to us.
And we're entitled to charge what it costs to do. But even the mighty press has its limitations.
Okay. Get on with the program. Whatever it is.
You know, that's the reason I'll talk to press, because they want to argue with it, and then they'll put in the paper. Then when they put something in the paper, they write what they must do.
I know.
And we don't have it.
We don't have that back. That turned out, we don't deserve.
Good morning. My privilege is chair to call this Russell County Commission official meeting to order for March 25th, 2015. And we are so thankful to have Pastor Grant Parker here. He is Commissioner Lee's pastor. And Pastor Parker, will you lead us in our invocation? And then I shall lead you in the pledge, so if you will rise and remain standing.
Let us pray. Our gracious God, you are our help in ages past and our hope for years to come. And God, we confess to you, there are times we consider this our county, but it's really yours. And God, sometimes we consider it's our world, but it's really not. You're the one that made it. It belongs to you. God, sometimes we gather together and we do the business of the state, business of the county and city. But Lord, remind us, it's really not our business, it's yours. Sometimes we confuse ourselves in thinking that we're self-made men and self-made women. But we're not. We didn't make you up. You made us up. We were fearfully and wonderfully made. You knitted saws when we didn't knit together in our mother's womb. God, it's you that made us and not we ourselves. This is your business, your county. This place belongs to you. And this hour is yours. So God, I pray your word over us today. In Proverbs 3:5 and 6, to trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path. Father God, I pray that this word be fulfilled in our hearing and in our sight today. In this, I ask in the powerful and precious and perfect name of Jesus who is called to Christ. Amen.
I was salute of pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. We do have some public comments. And if you will approach the microphone to speak, and you have three minutes on the topic. Ms. Kelly Roberts, she has the archery tournament follow-up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We had a good week last week with the archery tournament. We set a new record. We had 1,700 shooters, and that doesn't include any vendor staff spectators that solely registered shooters. So we probably had over 2,000 people at Uchi.
Awesome.
Not many more people will fit at Uchi. We learned that. So we pretty much maxed out capacity. We had lots of compliments on the entire tournament, on the county, on the friendliness of people here, so they were very pleased. I was trying to think, they're coming back in August, so I'll be harassing everybody again for volunteers in August. But we're having the big classic, which is the end of the year when they announce pro-shooter of the year and have the major shoot down. And so that's kind of a big deal for us to have it twice. Mike Terrell, who is the president of Archery Shooters Association, estimated that we probably had about a $2 million economic impact on the county. So based on studies they've done. So went well, and we'll have it again in August.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Madam Chair, while she's sitting down, I just want to say, Kelly, thanks for all the work. I've heard all about how hard you worked and how much you put into this, and appreciate it for the county. Thanks.
Next is Leroy Davis Jr. to give us a recap on the birthday ball of Post 135 and American Legion.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I just want to come up and thank you all for your support. Everybody bought something or did something. Thank the community as well. We had a great birthday ball. We had over 150 people. We had people come from out of town, everywhere. Saturday was a busy day for Russell County and Phoenix City. A lot of things was going on, a lot of positive thing. The chairperson was interviewed by the American Legion magazine. So was the mayor. We're going to be in the magazine, setting the pace for the rest of the country to see. When I started this, I thought I was following somebody else. Come to find out, nobody else is doing a birthday ball for the American Legion. So the American Legion really want to publicize this for not just the rest of the country, but the rest of the world to see, because we're in several different countries as well with Americans living in other countries. So we're doing something great. Next year, we look to be even better. And the money that was donated, you should be proud, because that's what we use for all rhetorical and boys state when we send the boys and girls state. And that's our next big function, Boys and Girls State, which we send the boys to the University of Alabama for one week to learn government. And when they get off the bus up there, they have to be ready to run for office, for governor, for secretary of state, all the way down to county commissioner, sheriff, and everything. They learn how government works. And the same thing with the girls. And on this Friday, and it's on the website, it's everywhere, we're having a female veteran stand down at American Legion Post 135. We'll have two VA buses up there, which will do medical exams on females, and will help them get jobs, will help them file for their benefits. And that's going to be from 9 until 2:30. On Saturday, we'll be in Montgomery for the state or rhetorical contest to determine who will be the winner to go to Washington DC to represent us. And we have a great candidate that came out of District 24, which is the district we are in. And he's home schooled, he's a ninth grader. His four sisters before him have won or rhetorical all the way up to the state, and two of them have went to nationals, and one came in second place. So that tell you that we're doing some great thing. And we want to just thank you for your support, and we look forward to continuing support.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and we appreciate the service of the American Legion and volunteers. You do a wonderful job. I want to thank the cable TV and the Citizen News. They're here to cover your government, and you can watch them on TV in a playback on that. Welcome to everyone, the elected officials, the media, and our department heads and citizens. We do appreciate you coming to here, to watch, to have input into your government. Madam Administrator, will you call the row?
I'll be waiting. District One Lead.
Present.
District Two Pew.
Present.
District Three Martin.
Here.
District Four Reed.
Here.
District Five Epps.
Here.
District Six Corbett.
Here.
District Seven Screw. Form established, ma'am chief.
Thank you. Trust you have read your minutes and are ready to make a motion and second for approval.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Epps. Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
District One Lead.
Yes.
District Two Pew. District Three Martin.
Yes.
District Four Reed.
Yes.
District Five Epps.
Yes.
District Six Corbett.
Yes.
District Seven Screw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And next, under our proclamations and resolutions, proclamation for the retirement of Ms. Linda Stillwell and Commissioner Corbett will present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a great honor today. Linda Stillwell is on the second row here. Linda started with the sheriff's office back in 1987. I'm not going to read the proclamation. I asked Ms. Horn to do that, thank goodness. Which is funny to think that, you know, for me, because I worked a lot of years with Linda while she was in dispatch when I was on the road. And she started when I was in eighth grade, so I don't mean to make you feel bad or anything. That was a long time ago, Linda, and we just appreciate the years of service that you've given to the county. Sheriff may want to come up and say something too. Obviously, I think 27 years total, it's a long time to give to any one place. And we just appreciate it, and we want to issue a proclamation to show our thanks as a commission body. If you'll step up.
Russell County Commission proclamation honoring Linda Stillwell on her retirement. Whereas Linda Stillwell, dispatcher for the Russell County Sheriff's Department, will be retiring March 31st, 2015, after years of faithful service to the Russell County and its citizens. And whereas Linda began her career as a correctional officer on October 3rd, 1987, later transferring to the sheriff's dispatch desk. In 2001, after 14 years of service, she left only to find there was nothing like the excitement of the sheriff's department, and returned in 2002 to work another 13 years. And whereas Linda's diligence, integrity, and expertise have earned her the trust, respect, and admiration of the county commission, her fellow employees, and the citizens of Russell County. Now therefore be it resolved that on March 31st, 2015, we the members of the Russell County Commission do hereby extend to Linda Stillwell our sincere and grateful appreciation for her dedicated service to Russell County, Alabama, our congratulations on her well-earned retirement, and our best wishes to her and her family for continued success and happiness for years to come. Signed by the commission.
This is a bittersweet time. It's always good to be able to have employees to retire and hope that they can, you know, go on and do something with their time and the rest of their life and enjoy it and not have to work as hard as Linda did. But, you know, when you lose somebody that has the experience and the knowledge that she has, that's tough to replace. So it's going to be tough for us to miss you in dispatch, and we hope you have an enjoyment and fulfilling retirement.
Thank you so much.
Can we have a show of hands from the commission that we are all in a court for this proclamation? They heard me or not. But Linda, we are very much appreciative of your good service. And you know, Russell County, we're blessed with good employees and department heads. We all end this together. We want to promote our county, our city, our state, and our nation. Next is the appreciation for EMA support. Donnie Smith.
There went the meeting. I'm sorry. Thank you, madam. Madam Chair. My name is Donnie Smith. I'm the director of Chambers County 911 and Emergency Management, and I'm here today on behalf of our county commission and Chairman Easteridge, as well as the chairman of our 911 and EMA board, Mr. Byron Pig. And my commissioners always say, "Donnie, you have three minutes." I don't care what it says, you know, the three-minute rule applies. So I would do my best to be brief. But just to give you a little background, Chambers County 911 and Emergency Management is host to one of seven regional communications units that are part of the Alabama Strategic Technology Reserve. And that basically is a compilation of equipment and people that's formed as a mutual aid team through Alabama Emergency Management and Homeland Security and ALIA, the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. And this team provides communications and IT equipment and personnel assets in times of disaster or large pre-planned events. Recently, we were called upon to support the 50th Anniversary Dream March in Selma during the days of March 4th through the 9th. This was the largest deployment of state mutual aid communications assets since the tornado outbreak of 2011. So this was a significant deployment. Our folks, two of which are your folks, were part of a 50-member team of communications professionals from around the state, along with communications personnel from the FBI, federal homeland security, air national guard, and the FCC. In less than 48 hours, the team deployed portable tower sites and repeaters and built out a digital secure radio network that was used by over 500 law enforcement officers in the city of Selma, as well as Dallas and Lowndes County for secure digital communications during this historic event, which I'm sure you all know included the presidential visit on that Saturday. Chambers County's communication truck, lovingly known as R4, since we're designated for Region 4, was actually in your county this past weekend at your Be Ready Day. Hopefully, you guys got a chance to take a look at it. This truck and our team provided eyes for the staff at Incident Command utilizing our video camera and satellite uplink system on both Saturday and Sunday of the event. Secretary Collier of the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency commended us on the quality of the video and how valuable it was in several isolated cases where crowd control issues arose. Department of Transportation cams that were set up, that you typically see along the major interstates, there were a number of those portable cameras set up. But cellphone video didn't work due to the overwhelming crowds. You know, on Sunday, we dealt with over 120,000 participants. And the most you could do on a cellphone was get a text message out. For like four hours, my cellphone wouldn't work. And so that posed a problem with the DOT cameras, because they use, you know, basically an air card type uplink. So our satellite uplink proved to be the only way to send video of the 100-plus thousand attendees back to Incident Command. Our personnel interacted seamlessly and professionally with other team members, Secret Service, and US Capitol Police, as well as assisting numerous visitors from all over the United States. And it is in that spirit that my board and our county commission has issued a letter of commendation to those team members. And I'll read it at this time, and if Bob and David want to come up. "On behalf of the Chambers County Commission and the Chambers County Emergency Communications 911 EMA Board, we extend our gratitude and commend the members of our 911 EMA Mobile Communications and Technology Team during its deployment to provide emergency communications in support of the 50th Anniversary Dream March in Selma, Alabama, March 4th through the 9th, 2015." Chambers County team members were myself, Jessica Jaeger, operations administrator for Chambers County 911 EMA, Darlene Billingsley, supervisor of Chambers County 911 EMA, Johnny Powell, communications officer of Chambers County 911 EMA, Johnny Langley, deputy director in Lee County EMA, Bob Franklin, director of Russell County EMA, David Martin, training coordinator and IT specialist, Russell County EMA, and David Burnson, deputy director, Elmore County EMA. The professionalism and dedication you exhibited towards your fellow public safety personnel, as well as to visitors and officials from all over the United States, was truly second to none. We sincerely appreciate your dedication and hereby commend you for your performance during this historic event. And the letter is signed again by my chairman, Byron Pig, Chambers County Emergency Communications District, and our county commission chairman, Mr. David Easteridge. So gentlemen, thank you for your help and your support, and we'll be calling on you again, guaranteed. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your visiting.
And if we can ever be of assistance to Russell County, no chance knows where I'm at.
Thank you. We do appreciate the EMA. They're always on the job when we really need them, but they're there doing their work and making preparation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to make one comment. That R4 still, he beat me out of that truck about 15 years ago, how long it was, so you still get me every time you talk about that truck. We almost got it in this county, so. He's the only one that beat me on that one, so. Thanks. Thanks, Don.
Next is a certificate of recognition for Deputy Chief Alexander. This is Epps.
All right, gee. Because for the simple reason, he grew up with my children, so it's like that he is my second son in the community. And the cause of the service that you give to the community and the cause of the hard work and sacrifice that you do in the community, especially in Fort Michigan, because that's where we live. So if we need some help, we don't have to call. He would like to say that Russell County Commission recognizes you for the work that you have shown, the outstanding work you do here, and the need for us to be so good. We realize that even the boy scout of America recognizes you as one of the citizens. And we want to say thank you and present you with this certificate, also with a, this one. It's a correct, one of, let's put it in the other. Thank you so much.
Don't spit it. Gee.
You'll get disappointed if it's not worth anything.
We have one discussion item, it'll follow up on Mr. Donnie Smith, but it's, Bob Franklin will give us his recap on the Saturday affair, Be Ready Day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just wanted to follow up with our Be Ready Day on Saturday. As you heard Mr. Smith speak, that we had R4 down here, along with about 30 other agencies, local city agencies, county, as well as state agencies that participated. And we probably had several hundred citizens come through the Be Ready Day and get information and have a good day, and had some free food for them that was provided by Servpro. And we got a lot of positive feedback, and a lot of people really enjoyed it. So a few things we may change next year. We will try not to compete with the archery tournament and the airshow next year, but it was a really good day. And I appreciate the county commission's support and all of those different agencies that came out, as well as all of our volunteer fire departments that came down and showed us support.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. We appreciate you and your staff. Moving to business items, the LaDonia complex signs, and Mr. Gary Leeds has that.
Madam Chair, county administrator and commissioners, good morning to you.
Good morning.
I wanted to bring to you reference to a complaint that we received from the league president of the LaDonia Sports Complex in regards to dogs being on the sports complex and being able to be, to run loose and depositing their feces on the ball fields. I have researched, matter of fact, the gentleman that's in question, I talked to him the other day, retired command sergeant major, and he and I was able to see, I and I being, myself being retired military. And he understood and said that he would find another place for his dog that could run loose. I have researched Burnt to Midnight Oil, and I have given to each one of you a way the law reads now. There is nothing in the law that we can cite to an individual for having a dog running loose with the individual there in the sports complex. We can, and I recommend, I recommend, you can post signs, but if you post signs, there's no teeth into the matter that we can enforce. My further recommendation is, because there is a problem, people can be up in the sports complex and have a dog that is not on a leash, and no one knows the mind of a dog, that that dog couldn't take off in a minute, go on the attack, or what have you, or just take off and run. I recommend that you all discuss and think about sending legislation to the state that we adopt a leash law for the sports complexes only. Yes, Commissioner, I have.
I'd love to leave neither one. You know, the commission has the right to pass certain guidelines for the use of that. I think we could request or either pass something that says the dog has to be on the leash, it has to stay on the walking trail in the sports field.
I don't have a problem with that, but I went up yesterday, because I've heard of some complaints. And I observed maybe four or five different people that had dogs on leashes doing proper, and the dog was just trotting along with the owners. The complex is to be used. I don't want to do things to make it unusable. And I don't want to do things to make our law, just for the use of that property, more stringent than what it is with the county already. So I think that most of the residents that live in my community out there would appreciate if you just put a sign up that says, "Please keep your dog on a leash and on the walking trail and off the sports field." I think they would observe that. I don't even think we have to have, I would just like to say at this time, as a commissioner, I'd just like to post a sign out there, basically asking the citizens to do that. And I think that they will be courteous enough to do it. And like you said, there is no law that would force them to do it. And who's going to do it, the city, the county? Commissioner, in response to your question, I have talked with both the sheriff's deputy Eric, as well as Phoenix City. The only way Phoenix City could enforce it is if that it was in the law about them not being on a leash. Other than what this states right now, they cannot enforce it within the police jurisdiction.
Yeah, I was fixing to say, the law deals with the county. In other words, there's no, we tried to find one a couple of years ago, and some people thought we had passed a lease law, but we can't find it, so we don't have it. But the county certainly has the power to regulate how the sports facilities are used. What the penalty is, that's another matter. I hadn't dug into that yet, because I didn't know it was coming up. But you certainly have the basic police power to regulate. So if somebody's out there without a lease, and you've got a no-lease situation as to the use of county property, you can do that if you want to. the use of county property, you can do that if you want to.
What does affect? Seal, seal complex?
You'd have, I don't, you'd be in, you'd have a problem if you didn't do it. Do it, you know, if you say the sports facilities, that would mean, the sports facilities.
That's correct, it would be. I'm sorry, that was my, yeah.
How come we just can't go ahead and just vote on the law, just say no pets at all?
We don't have that authority.
No law. I mean, we can just say, we just put a sign up or something saying no pet.
You can, law, you can enforce it. Now, does it have the force of, is there a fine that goes with it? Not unless somebody creates a public disturbance when you ask them to abide by the rule and regulation. I mean, I don't know, there wouldn't be a $100 fine with it kind of thing, but you can regulate it, which means your officers will have the authority to, or whoever's running the facility to ask people to abide by whatever your rule is.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
But my question would be, what happens if one of the dogs, you know, decides to attack, even if the dog is on a leash? Would we be liable?
They probably would.
I'm gonna have to say that that's a legal question, and that's legal liability, and a jury would have to decide that.
That's, that's true.
You said they, or we?
They, they would be the people, the person, if you had a rule.
Right.
If somebody had a dog out there that were not on lease and they bit somebody, I mean, while you don't have a county, you haven't adopted the law, you have a rule, then it would get into liability, but you're right, some court would have to decide what that means.
I got a question for you. If my dog leaves my yard and bites someone down the street, is the county gonna be liable?
No.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not talking about the liability.
Well, we don't have a law, we have a containment law, we don't have a leash law. I'm not worried about the liability at this point, but I am worried about maybe a vicious type dog not being on a leash. I'm, in the form of a motion, I'm gonna ask that this commission, at least take the first step today, put up signs asking that all animals be put on leashes, and that they maintain the walking trail and not the sports complex playing area. And that would be on anything that the county has in a sports type of walking trails, etc.
If you pass that, you put your sign up, I mean, it is, the county's not gonna be liable with the dog, is all I'm saying, that the person may be.
Correct.
That depends on the facts.
We have a second for that.
Mr. Pugh, do you mind repeating that?
Yes, ma'am. I know, ma'am, I do not, but I will repeat it. That we, that the county put up signs, and the signs stating that all dogs or animals have to be on leash, and that they have to maintain the walking trail, and they're not allowed into the field of play. We can actually do a better job with the words when we start trying to lay the sign out, but that's the gist of it. All we want to do is maintain the dogs to the, to the walking trail, and ask them to actually curb their dogs when they have the urge up there, you know.
Do we have a second to his motion?
Yes. Commissioner Lee.
Now, well, I got a question I want to ask, but, and I will second it so I can ask the question. The complaint, I thought, arose from the fact that people walking on the walking trail had to be real careful where they stepped, and I don't think this would have anything to do with that and wouldn't correct it.
No, but it's a step in the right direction. We don't know whether the feces is coming from dogs that roam the neighborhood or not, but at least we're starting to get some control. I do not want to do something to prohibit the people from using.
I don't either, but, I mean, you know, I don't know that we have the authority to do what this motion says, and if we don't have the authority, why don't we just go one step further and require them to carry a bag and a scoop with them?
Well.
Like they do everywhere else.
Well, I, let me tell you, anyone who takes their dog up on a leash has enough common sense, and I'm gonna tell you, the folks in Ladona have just as good a sense of people in New York. They will pick it up if they just have a nice sign asking them to do that. If you don't ask them to do it, there's gonna be people coming in and not going to do it, but if you ask them to do it, they will do it.
Or the easiest thing to do is just, if your dog has to go, let him walk off the trail. You can walk with him.
That's why I said curb your dog.
But anyway, I will second it, but it, like I said, I don't think it corrects the problem, and I don't know what the answer to the problem is. I know we can't send a fire truck out there every day and wash the whole walking trail off.
I think the answer to the problem is the community's conscious. I think that people, when you ask them to do that, and people do not do it, there's like someone that throws litter out the window, and you look at them across, sitting in your vehicle next to them, with a disgusting look, I think they get the message, and I think the folks in Ladona will react to it properly.
Madam Chair.
And I don't know about your area, but I'm okay with it in my area.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have no, I guess, personal opinion on this, but I have talked to a couple of people, would like to have time to talk to more people before we make a decision. I have had one person tell me, hey, I love taking my dog up there on a leash and love running around the place, and I don't want to have to go to Columbus to the River Walk to do that. I'd rather keep doing it in Ladona, but I've had one person tell me also that the feces on the track is a problem, and that they're not cleaning up after the dogs. I'm really torn on this one, because I don't want to restrict a rural walking trail, but at the same time, there needs to be some rules, too.
Wait a minute. I didn't second a motion restricting the walking track. I seconded a motion restricting the use of the ball fields. So your motion didn't restrict the use of the walking trail?
It did not.
Okay.
So we're not talking about the walking trail, which goes right through the complex anyway, we're not talking about walking trails at all?
Not on the playing field.
Okay, well, that changes my motion, too. Thanks for clarifying.
My concern is that eventually we will probably put a walking trail in Seale, which means this, at some point, is gonna affect that complex, too. I would be for, for no animal. That would be mine.
On the walking trail, too?
On the complex at all.
See, I won't support that.
I wouldn't, I can't do that, because that's why people.
Madam Chairman, I feel like the same way. I just feel like no pet, you don't have to worry about stuff all on the ground and everything like that, no pet at all, that's where I feel like.
Madam Chair. Yes.
That makes it better for me.
First, we do have a walking trail in my, in District 5. I haven't got any complaints from anyone about animals on the walking trail. I haven't got any complaints about anything about the walking trail, no more than some concerns that it's not long enough, so they want, want to, you know, expand it. But when we're talking about out in, in the rural area, animals runs all over the place. And I don't know how we're going to be able to regulate this, and tell who, who put it there, what dog put it there, whether they were out walking a dog or on a leash. If you go back and it's everywhere, because animals, I don't know, maybe in Ladona, it's different, but in Fort Mitchell, animals run around everywhere, all over the place.
Yeah, we have a law to prevent that.
And we are right in, we are right, we are right, and the walking trail in Fort Mitchell is really right in the, a subdivision area, so if those peoples have dogs that they would turn them out, let them out of their house to go outside, and they go to the walking trail, come back home, we don't know who, what happened, so I don't know how we're going to be able to regulate all of this stuff that we're talking about. We can put the signs out, say no dogs, but will that help us? I don't know.
Our current law prevents that from happening. Now, catching them is something else, but that's what we have dog catches for, they can't.
You can't catch everybody?
They can't catch them all, I know, but.
I just think the first step we need to take is no animal in the park, and that's taken care of it, and then work from there to enforce it. I realize that we can't enforce it, you know, at this point, but then if we ward it down, then we've got the same problem coming forward in the future. We might as well just deal with it now at one time and be through with it.
Well, I can go with that sign. I can go with the sign.
That's all I have some.
Madam Chair, has anybody, Gary or Bill, has anybody spoken to the league presidents of the two different leagues, in SEAL and Russell, and down in Ladona?
Not in SEAL, this is solely by Mr. Taylor from Ladona.
So he supports no animals in the, in the complex?
He supports that the animals should not be in the sports complex area because of the deposits at the, the dogs.
He's talking about the playing fields now, not, okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
But my motion addresses that.
It does?
Okay, so we're not including the walking trails?
Not in the motion on the floor.
Since we've, to me, talking about this for 10 minutes, I hate to ask you to do this, will you state your motion one more time?
My motion is that, as a courtesy, we'll just place a sign up there asking any person that brings an animal, mostly dogs, that they be on a leash, and that they not be allowed into the field areas, only the walking trail.
Madam Chairman.
So that's a starting point for us.
Call for the vote. If voted up and down.
You'll answer your question.
When you said on the field, you're by the playing field.
Playing field, correct.
Okay.
They're not allowed, that's why I said not to allow them on the playing fields.
So then you come back and say the walking trail.
The walking trail goes around the circumference of the area that we have as a park out there. That walking trail does not go onto the field at all. There, most of my fields are either fenced off, or either down in bowls, that you gotta walk off the trail into those, and it's several yards down to them. We have a defined walking trail, just like you do down at your civic center. As long as they stay on that loop, they're okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner, I don't like the motion, I'm sorry. The reason I don't like is you're saying playing fields, but that doesn't address bleachers and areas around the fields, concession stands, so I'm not trying to pick your motion apart, but I just don't necessarily like saying the playing fields. Sorry, I won't support it this way, so I just don't, I don't think we've ever had a complaint of a dog being on the playing fields itself. I think what you're meaning is around the bleacher area and stuff, too, right?
If I may.
My motion was very clear.
Okay, well, let's go with that motion.
I thought the league.
I'm not gonna stop someone from taking a dog to the bleacher. I've been to ball games at Pioneer, I go to, down Columbus, Georgia on Saturday morning, and that's the most dog-friendly area you'll ever see on Broad Street, and it's bumper to bumper with people. And there's nothing wrong with people who like that.
Gary, didn't the league complain about on the field? Isn't that why we?
Yes, sir. That is correct, Commissioner.
On the baseball.
On the field.
On the field. That was, that was one of the, one of the complaints by Mr. Taylor.
How do they get, how would they, an animal get on the field even if he was not on a leash? That is a fenced area, is what I'm going, and they have to, they have to get through gates or whatever.
Commissioner Pugh, the sports complex out there, the gates are sometimes, and I have witnessed it, are left open.
Well, I understand that, but it's still a fenced area.
It's a fenced.
It's not my responsibility to lock the gates, it's whoever who's in charge of that place to keep it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Are we ready for the votes?
Yes, ma'am. Please.
District 1 Lee.
Yes.
District 2 Pugh.
Yes.
District 3 Martin.
Yes.
District 4 Reed.
No.
District 5 Epps.
I'm going abstain because I'm not understanding the playing field and the walking trail.
District 6 Corbett.
Sure, I'll vote for it.
Yes.
District 7 Screw.
No.
Motion carried. Thank you.
So now, let me ask someone.
Okay.
Who fills the phone calls for this, this problem we got?
It passed, Commissioner.
Pardon?
It passed.
Oh, I thought you voted no.
No, he voted for it.
You need to speak up, I thought you voted no.
Everybody in here? Here.
Well, I didn't hear you.
I hope this will help the problem, it's, like you said, there's no teeth in it, so I can just ignore it.
Our next business item is a court-ordered cremation, and the coroner's here, and we do have a letter from the circuit judge in our package.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I stand before you asking that if you would, take upon yourselves to approve of the county cremation. We're unable to locate any family within this area or any other area.
We have a motion?
Second, Madam Chairman.
Second, Commissioner. Madam Chair, I need to state for the record that it's for the body of Ronald Brown, for Strickler Hampt, the mortuary, not to exceed $400.
That's correct.
We poll the commission. District 1 Lee.
Yes.
District 2 Pugh.
Yes.
District 3 Martin.
Yes.
District 4 Reed.
Yes.
District 5 Epps.
Yes.
District 6 Corbett.
Yes.
District 7 Screw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the request for records, attorney Thunder.
Madam Chair, of course, I've covered this at the workstation, but let me say this. The ledger has had in its possession for several weeks virtually every piece of information which they, which the ledger has released on Columbus and Phoenix City. So they have not been interfered with in any way to release the same kind of information that they released on Columbus and Phoenix City. And they've elected not to do that, but instead, as I said Monday, they took the improper position that they had the right to tell the county what, when they would release this additional information, which is the name of all the employees, their title, and their salary. Although they had in their possession the number of employees in each slot, the actual salary of that employee, and the range of the salary, they had all that information. So the information they want is the kind of information that they've been putting on the world, on the web, and not the information which they have been releasing in their newspaper. Now, since I was accosted this morning by the reporter still disturbed that somehow the county, contrary to the law, has to release information on their schedule, the issue is whether they intend on treating the county differently than they've treated Columbus and Phoenix City, and try to release or do release in their paper information which they did not release on Phoenix City or Columbus. Of course, that was essentially their threat when they sent a letter to me, who is not in charge of records, Thursday, saying that if you didn't release this information they wanted on their schedule essentially, by Friday afternoon, that's from Thursday to Friday, they were gonna essentially talk bad about you in the paper. So unless they want to continue with their threats and release this information, which I will recommend you release this morning, which they put on the web, but they've not put in the paper, perhaps they intend to treat you differently, I don't know. As I've stated, since we're on television this morning, I'll reiterate, this information has never been requested before, and you, you, the commission, have never been in regular session where this issue was brought up, except now, which it was brought up in due course, which means it has to go on the docket, it has to go on the agenda, you deal with it on Monday, the work session, and then you vote on Wednesday. So until the commission votes, it has not taken official action on anything. Now, sometimes, you know, we have to remind folks that official action means not what the attorney says or does, or not what, official action is what happens when this body meets and this body votes. And when I give information, unless I'm sleepy today and not sharp enough, I give information to the county commission on the record, sitting right here, and not through the medium, media sources or any other medium. This is the place where the public knows what's going on. And I will say this, I'll tell the public, this commission is, very astute in making sure that the business they do for this county is done out here in public, and that's good. So my recommendation is that based on the law, that we have to release, unfortunately, the names of all the ditch diggers and secretaries and people who drive trucks, we have to release all that information, their title, their name, and their salary. And of course, along with that, that is to be done, not, we don't respond to the schedule of the ledger, we respond to the schedule established by the employees, by the administrator, and how long it takes to put that information together. I don't know how long that'll take, but that's the process, and then whatever cost are involved are part of that process. So I recommend you release it, and that it's done in due course by the administrator, and that the usual and normal charges for accumulating that information are assessed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I want to make the motion that we release names, along with the other information, but caution our staff to be very careful not to accidentally include something on there that we're not supposed to release, because we don't have these records in a database like this. like this. So we'll take some work on our staff's behalf, don't know how long it'll take. So my motion is, even though I don't know why state legislatures included names, 'cause names can be gotten, if you know somebody's name, you can look on the, and know their job, you can find the salary on what we've already released. But, you know, my concern when this issue first came up, 'cause it had never come up before, is I know there's certain federal, a lot of federal privacy laws, having worked in the insurance business previously, health insurance as well as property, I know there's tons of federal laws and I didn't know how that did with this, but after checking the law and even with the attorneys of recommendation, I've come to the conclusion that it is required. So I make the motion that the names be released and they also be released in a timely fashion to provide this information, you know, as soon as possible. I don't want this thing to lay on six months saying we didn't have time to do it. Yeah, we'll have to stop doing what we're doing to do it, but I think it can be done in a timely manner, so that's my motion. Madam Chairman, at this time, I'd like to second the motion. Also, we're on discussion, I'd like to ask Mr. Chuck William to come down and ask what kinda information he asks for. He might not, you know, be asking for the information, Mr. Thunderbury, I don't know what kinda information.
We were.
I'd like for him to come down and just, just state what he need. You got a few minutes, Mr. Chuck William?
We have the right, we don't do the order.
This mic right here.
Madam Chair, he's asked us publicly and in the paper for the information, I don't know that we need any more comment on it, we just need to vote.
Well, we, we were up for discussion and we, we're gonna discuss this now.
Well, I know, and I'm asking.
You have, you have your time to make comment.
Go ahead, Mr. William.
We've requested name, position, job description and salary of all of their county employees.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, discussion. As we stated on Monday night, I'm okay with Commissioner Lee's motion, I do ask that, and I don't necessarily think it has to be in the motion, but I'll ask the administrator if we can continue with the process of sending a letter to all county employees stating the requirement by law and the intent of the commission to abide by that requirement. Thank you.
Are we ready to poll the commission?
District one Lee.
Yes.
District two Pugh.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps.
Yes.
District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Screws.
Thank you. Moving on, districts one, two, four and five need to make appointments with the planning commission. Are you ready?
Madam Chair, district one would like to reappoint Mr. Gary Head.
Okay. District two?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'm gonna defer to the next meeting. I've not had time to talk tonight. They had indicated early on, yes, but I wanna confirm that.
So you're not ready yet?
Yep, so it's on the point.
Okay. Four?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Austin Tough, already talked to him, he willing to say.
A nomination or an appointment?
An appointment. It's an appointment. It's an appointment. Madam Chairman, excuse me.
Yes, Madam Chair, district five would like to reappoint for Nord Crawford. It has been confirmed.
Okay, thank you. Next is support of fire, the legislation.
Madam Chair, as we spoke on Monday night, I was approached by the volunteer fire departments in the county with a need that they have, their funding has been decreasing over the years and they, they do request that citizens in the county pay a voluntary fire due system. It ranges anywhere from 25 to 50 bucks, I think, in certain cases, maybe more now. Obviously, they have a hard time collecting that, in certain cases, they get 25 percent of the people actually pay that bill, I think it was a conversation I had Monday night. So I brought this before the consultants that you hired, or that we hired as a commission to push legislation forward, I brought it before them, but it appears that I was the only commissioner that mentioned it in our meeting, so I'd like to get it on the floor and it resonates with Ms. Epps said on Monday night, you know, why haven't we talked about it, that's, we're here to talk about it now. The fire departments stated the request to come today and Monday night and speak. Mr. Sandlin is the chief of SEAL Fire Department, spoke on Monday night. Danny, if you will, step forward if you don't mind, I would like for him to speak and explain what their need is. I'm not asking that we take any action other than support the fire departments in asking our consultants and our legislators to support the fire departments the same, so Danny.
Thank you, the main reason we looking for funds, of course, a lot of people stopped drinking and stopped smoking, we was getting our funds from the alcohol and tobacco monies that come into funds. Right now, we're trying to work on $26,000 and it's almost impossible with 19 firefighters, each uniform costs about $3,500 to complete an outfit for a firefighter. They try to run three stations and eight vehicles. I just purchased two fire, two trucks, two tires for fire trucks, cost me $3,000 out of my $26,000. The main reason is, we're trying to help our neighbors and community by keeping the insurance rates down and the only way we can do that is to maintain the equipment that we got and improve on buildings. I got one building out on Sanford Road, it was built like in the early 80s, it is very small and it will not fit the trucks that I can find today. I'm not good at grant writing, grant writing is competitive, okay, that's for everybody out there in the whole state of Alabama. I don't mind buying my own vehicles, the last three that I have purchased came from either government, uh, government. Gov deals, auction sites or either eBay. I got a vehicle out there right now that I bought off eBay. We are pretty good at finding good used stuff, but we just need funds to maintain the equipment that we have and to upgrade some of our older buildings.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, again.
You make a motion so we can talk.
Yeah, I'm fixing to. I'm not finished talking yet, though, I'm sorry. I just wanna point out for the fire departments that they are all, they're all volunteer, there are no paid firefighters in this county. They provide a lifeline, not only for fires, but for medical calls, vehicle accidents and other things, and I just wanna show their support. So I will make the motion, Bob, do you have anything we wanna add to it? Our EMA director obviously works very close with the fire departments, as he should, and actually serves as the treasurer of the association, do you have anything?
And I know Danny spoke of grants, you know, the fire departments have had a little bit of success in grant writing and getting some funds, but even with that, the ones that get it, there's still a match to that. So that, Fort Mitchell, for example, just bought a $236,000 truck, but they still had to make an $11,000 match of that $26,000 Danny spoke of. They also purchased a truck, and that's a $16,000 a year truck payment. And there's a lot of fire departments out there that's doing the same thing, that they're, the funds just don't go like they used to. And part of the problem is, I was looking at the beer tax, for instance, and it's been flat or actually going downhill, and we brainstormed to figure out why is the beer tax going down? Because people still drink.
I can tell you why.
But we figured out that mostly in the LaDonia area, when the city, once the city annexes that property in, we no longer receive that tax for the fire department. So it's been a steady decline on the beer tax and then, of course, people stopped smoking and that's been a decline as well. They wanna mirror this bill, similar to Lee County's, but they do wanna balance it out because of the rural areas, all of the departments need a base amount of money to operate, cover your operating expenses. Of course, the areas that have a higher call volume, you do have a higher expenses and they wanna, some of those funds from those areas would go strictly to those departments, but everybody would get a base amount out of this, is what they're planning to do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
As I approached, as I finally approached my motion, I wanna mention that so far, it hasn't been drafted, there's been a lot of talk and looking at the different laws, it should not take long to draft if they decide to do that, and that it will be asking for it to be placed as a referendum on the ballot, so it's not anything that we're taking action, raising any taxes or anything, it will be a call of the people, the people and the citizen in the unincorporated portions of the county would actually vote on it. So at this time, my motion is, I'd like to request that we send a letter to our legislative consultants and each member of our legislative delegation, show in support for the drafting of legislation for the volunteer fire departments, their fire dues, and ask our consultants, if it's once drafted, the same be presented in a timely manner to the county commission for review.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We're up for discussion.
No, we're not, there you go.
Okay. Now you can discuss it. Okay, we're up for discussion. Madam Chairman, I think it'd be out of order if we vote on this thing right here, I'd like to see, we need to get legislation first and we need to read and then we send it up there. No, that's not what the motion is.
I didn't ask for the legislation, I asked a letter of support.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
First of all, one of the reasons, Bob, if you look back far enough, you'll see that those taxes took the biggest drop when lottery was introduced in Georgia and not over here. It's when they stopped to buy their lottery ticket, they buy their beer and cigarettes, but, and you're also right about the annexation hurting our tax. But Chance, you, you did say finally what I was gonna say when I wanted to talk, is this, all we were doing was supporting what the fire departments proposed, they're gonna present their legislation to the legislature themselves and it will require a vote of the people, so we'll just support it. People don't want it, they won't vote for it, if they do, they will, so that's all I needed to say.
Okay, are we ready?
Madam Chair, the LaDonia has been through the tax before. I've got very serious mixed emotions about it, that I think, instead of us talking about piecemealing or trying to do something, we at the commission need to be stepping up and talking with the volunteer fire departments about trying to model something out to true county, full-time county service, and that this county at some point is gonna have to take on some of that responsibility instead of putting it on our citizens. It, that's, I've not heard that come out in this talk, but some of that needs to be talked about before it gets to the vote of the people.
Madam Chair, I, I don't disagree in the sense that we need to look at things, I have, I have actually had those conversations with a lot of them in their meetings as well, and it always comes back to one thing, if you pay some of them, the ones that are volunteering are, may quit volunteering.
They quit volunteering.
Oh, well, they can take care of those calls, they're getting paid, and we don't want that, we don't wanna send the wrong message, so I absolutely think we should be open to all of it. You know, we've had those conversations in the, in their association meetings on the sidebar, and I think it's something good to talk about, even some, some other counties out here have actually, they give per call basis, an incentive to help cover their fuel in their vehicles and stuff like that, so there's a lot of stuff there, but at this point, I just, I think they're, they're in dire, they're in need of something, whether this bill passes or not, we're gonna have to try to help them some way.
Madam Chair, I would be in support of the resolution, we gotta start somewhere and as we get this one going, maybe we can move to do something else. But I think we need to go ahead and pass the resolution.
Call.
Yes.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District two Pugh.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps.
Yes.
District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Screws.
Yes.
So the public understands, we did not ask for a tax on our property of each citizen, we're asking that legislation be drawn up, that they can vote on it a later date, and that is supported by the volunteer fire department of the county.
That's correct.
Madam Minister, you have the next.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm requesting approval from the commission this morning to advertise for a 50-ton package industrial rooftop unit for the Russell County courthouse. This unit that we're replacing is 17-plus years old, the compressors are leaking, multiple condenser evaporative troubles. We have been patching it all along, but we're afraid with the summer months approaching that patching will not hold up. I plan to open the bids on April 20th, 2015, at 2:00 Eastern Time Zone. I will place this on our website as well as in the paper and also on our bulletin boards to advertise.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll promote that we accept the recommendation coming from our administrator to request bids for 50-ton rooftop.
And I second that, Madam Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, wait a minute, just need to have in the record, since we're being specific on brand, the reason of that is, is we have other units, other controls, a lot of computer controls that are specific to a certain brand, that's why we're having to, in our bid, name the brand.
That's correct, and I also wanted to state too, that this, we do have budgeted funds for this and I do hope and anticipate that this comes in with what we do have budgeted. But of course, I'll bring it back to the commission once the bids are coming in.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District two Pugh.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps.
Yes.
District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Screws.
Yes.
Thank you.
Landscape management.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm requesting at this time to advertise for bid for landscape management services for the Russell County Commission courthouse and the judicial building, and also I had to request Monday evening to add the old health department, which I will do. I would like to, and those services are listed within your document, I plan to open those bids April 9th, 2015, at 3:00 PM. And also another request to those specifications for services, I think Commissioner Screws had for me to add lava rock, so I'll do that and amend those documents accordingly and bring that information back to you once we open the bids.
Motion to approve. I second, Madam Chairman. We're up for discussion. Hey, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to address this, I think somebody, whoever was cutting the flowers in the hedge or bush like that, they cut down the rosebush, maybe we need to add some more, more rosebushes outside.
That's the purpose of hopefully.
And I think some zellia too, bushes and stuff will cut down also.
Yes, sir, but our inmates are not.
We need to make sure they.
Is trained in that area. But I'm hoping that with a professional service, that we will get our ground maintenance service back to where it should be.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanna applaud the administrator for taking this step, this is something that I think's needed to be done, and for a while, I know our guys are busy and they, when you're in a hurry trying to cut a lot of grass, it's really easy to chop down rosebushes or whatever you're going on, moving through. I've actually had elected officials that are in the building and department heads mention it in the past as well with the administrator, so I think this is a good step forward.
Thank you.
District one Lee.
Yes.
District two Pugh.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps.
Yes.
District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Screws.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney.
We have an appeal which we need to consider at executive session, so you need to vote whether to go into executive session, then we'll have to come back, of course, to approve whatever actions you've taken out here, but I don't know, it shouldn't take 30 minutes to call.
Not that.
15. Okay. By the time we go and come, just 20 minutes.
Could I have a motion that we go into recess for this?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make that motion, but also, I'd like for you to do the announcement before we go into executive session, 'cause some of the people just.
I will. Be glad to. But let's vote on this first. Is there a second? Your second, okay.
We got two seconds.
Okay. District one Lee.
Yes.
District two Pugh.
Yes.
District three Martin.
Yes.
District four Reed.
Yes.
District five Epps.
Yes.
District six Corbett.
Yes.
District seven Screws.
The judicial building only, not the courthouse, will be closed on Good Friday, April 3rd, and this is a letter given by Judge Bellamy for that. And then the ACCA will have county days, April 14th, and this will be the day when we will see our representatives and we can talk with them about what we have on our mind.
Madam Chair, will you just state for the, for the folks in the audience, I saw some eyes start popping, that is, for the judicial building, it's for state employees only, not county employees. You may have it.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was stated, was it stated, okay? I just saw some eyes start popping around. I went, I'm sure I heard it. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna use Judge Har, the courtroom judge.
All right.
Do we have a motion to reconvene?
Tomo.
Second.
District One Lee?
Yes.
District Two Pew?
Yes.
District Three Martin?
Yes.
District Four Reed?
Yes.
District Five Out?
Yes.
District Six Corbin?
Yes.
District Seven Screafer?
Yes.
We reconvene.
Madam Chair, based on the full hearing, the full information provided, uh, I recommend that the county commission deny the appeal of the employee.
Have a motion, please.
Tomo.
Second.
Have a motion, and a second. District One Lee?
Yes.
District Two Pew?
Yes.
District Three Martin?
Yes.
District Four Reed?
Yes.
District Five Out?
Yes.
District Six Corbin?
Yes.
District Seven Screafer? You have an announcement?
I do. Madam Chair, after the events of the last couple of weeks, I would like for the county commission to please consider sending forward a request to our legislators to have legislative research, look at the open meetings law, and see if there's some more protection that may be provided for our regular county employees. Um, I feel releasing the name, uh, will have adverse effects. I understand, you know, the laws have changed a lot since nineteen ninety-one. Uh, we're facing a lot of identity theft, things that, uh, the media, that it's, you know, I, I watch the social medias places, but you know, I don't look on anybody's Facebook if they put out their, their salary information or personal information, uh, at least, uh, that I've seen on social media. And I just feel that the employee's rights, um, if the employee wants to release it, that is their right, but I, I feel on a personal basis, and I, and I feel for my employees because I can't tell you how many employees have come to me, talked to me, called me, emailed me, that are highly upset about their names being released. They feel that they're, they're gonna be a target for criminals, um, assaults on the web, um, all types of things I've heard from A to Z, but I really would like this commission, um, to, to be proactive and let's look at this. We're not being secretive, we're not trying to hide any records from anyone. This is about protecting someone's identity as far as their personal information and protecting their families. And, uh, it, it really, it really has concerned, I don't mean one employee, I mean hundreds of employees that we have, um, are, are very upset by this. I will send a letter that the commission's asked me to send to the county employees, um, notifying that. And also, the comparison, in my opinion, is not fair. It is like comparing arena football, their salaries for those players to NFL players. We are not municipalities. We do not have the salary or the revenue capability that municipalities have. Not only, I don't know why the county has been brought into this to be compared with Columbus, Georgia salaries. I, I, I don't understand that because again, their budget is way beyond what Russell County capabilities has, has to do. The county commission can't change revenue, it's set by legislature. Municipalities have the ability to raise, uh, taxes, uh, as they see fit to adjust their revenue and their budgets, which gives them more flexibility to pay a, a different rate in salary. Um, and it, and it's not even apples to apples a, a, at any rate that you look at it. And not only has this caused, uh, already dissension and, and some deterioration in, in the morale of the employees, but, uh, we're dealing with a lot of outfall from this weather, all the commissioners are knowing or not. I wanted to report that to you, um, that again, this is not a fair comparison. It, it has created a lot of internal issues and it's not again, and I know the paper keeps wanting to say, uh, you know, they're trying to hide something, but matter of fact, I welcome anybody to come down and look at our records. If an employee wants to release this information, that's their right to do, but I just don't, I feel laws sometimes need to be looked at and updated according to the changes in society and I think this is one that needs to be looked at and reviewed and possibly changed to protect our employees.
You have a motion for that?
That would be out of order.
We'll put it on. I think we can put it on next time. I don't think there's anything we can do.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's nothing to be done between now and then.
I, I agree totally with our administrator. Uh, the warrant is gonna bring down the morale even among our employees here in the county because they're gonna find out what another employee making is probably the same, you know, every, you know. Now, when I, before I retired, the company that I worked for, the employees couldn't even tell each other what they was making because they did not want the morale and because they got, you know, some got steps, some got cost of living, and some got increased because of, you know, their, uh, work that they just done. And I think this is very unfair, not only to the employees, but it is also unfair, unfair, I tell to the county commissioners, having to make a decision like this that is involving over three hundred employees. I think it's very unfair and I think that's a very good idea that the commissioners really should take under consideration and see can we get something, uh, changed or whatever.
I would appreciate your consideration and, and thank you. I just felt I needed to speak up for the employees at Russell County after I've heard for so many.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
All that is good and it sounds good, but once the bell is rung, you can't unring it. So when these names are released, most of these employees will probably be here for a pretty good while, so you can't go through and take something that back that's already been done. So I just need to remind you then. May prevent it in the future, but, um, for those three hundred employees, it won't help them at all.
And just for the record, I've had some stay and they wanted to quit because of this, what's happening, and these are long-term employees. They are very, I've had some very upset people in that. So, and I, and I don't know what the benefit of this is. I certainly opened the public records to, uh, this, you know, like I said, the salary, the duties, the responsibilities, and, and what they're being paid. And, and that's, to any citizen, they're welcome to come along.
Madam Chair, uh, just to expand on the fact that we're gonna send the letter to the employees and their paychecks, I think it would be good for the administrator, Ms., Ms. Carolyn here, to, uh, look at in the future when we hire employees, to make sure there's a disclosure in there that they understand that their salary, title, and, um-
Name.